All right, go ahead. Start the meeting. Good morning, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for March 31st, 2020. We want to thank everybody who's joining us live via our Zoom meeting this morning, and those of us that are joining us via telephone. You can be, you are watching this either on our YouTube channel, or our Facebook channel, or on our public access at Washoe County TV. This time, if you have any public comments you have on our agendas, you're able to email them in. And for individuals that are on the Zoom meeting, we would ask that we will keep everybody's mics silent until, at that time, we get to a public comment period. You would be asked to raise your hand during that period, and we will queue you up for a public comment, and you will be able to speak at public comment as if you were here in the chambers with us. We want to thank everybody during this COVID-19 pandemic that it is challenging. This is a new type of meeting for us. We are working through technical difficulties, so there are some challenges and delays. We apologize that in advance, but please bear with us. But for the most part, we feel that we've got most of the kinks worked out. So with that being said, I will take us in. Commissioner Hartung, will you take us into a salute of the flag, please, sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, would you join me while we salute the flag of the greatest nation in the world? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hartung. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Pickler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung via phone.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Present in chamber.
Jeannie Herman.
I'm here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Deputy Assistant District Attorney David Watzvial.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a form, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, and for those individuals watching us online, we are practicing social distancing here in the chambers and our proper hygiene. We have our hand sanitizer on behind the dais here, so just for everybody's understanding. All right, we are on to our first public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any written public comment that has been submitted?
I do have one so far. It is from Nicole Roberts. And let me get my timer up.
Could you please read that into the record for us?
I will. "We are homeowners in Incline Village and agree the community, with the community, that there should be absolutely be a temporary ban on short-term home rentals in the community during this COVID-19 outbreak. We currently have a group of four teenagers that checked into a rental unit next door, smoked pot on the balcony last night, destroyed a snowman out front, and are clearly here for no other reason to cause trouble. They are not social distancing. Whenever they leave the unit, the cleaning service will be at risk in these, in case these kids have COVID-19. Homeowners will not discontinue rentals on their own because they have their own mortgages to pay, and may rely on the rental income to pay the mortgage. However, lives are at risk here, and the governor must declare a short-term ban on vacation rentals in Incline Village. Thank you so much for your consideration to protect the community, Nicole Roberts."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Roberts, if you're watching online, for that submission. I will go down to our operators. Now, do we have public comments signed in? All right, seeing that we do. First public comment signed in on our Zoom meeting will be Will Adler. Mr. Adler, your Zoom mic has been unblocked. Please, the floor is yours. You have three minutes, sir.
I appreciate it. I also sent in a written public comment as well, and I've fore and got confirmation from the Washoe County 311. So if that can be submitted in the public record as well, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. I'll, I'll just keep it short, and hopefully that can be found and written to the record at some point. But for my own public comment, I would like to, in addition to the last public commenter, I am representing a few residents of Incline Village via SSGR, Silver City Government Relations. And a few comments have come up, and a few different emails have gone out in the last week about this issue of Airbnbs and other online digital short-term rentals and vacation rentals having an ability to rent up in Incline Village. And I don't think that itself is as great an issue as just sort of the overall issue of coronavirus and what it is doing to the United States. So I do want to emphasize that I think all leaders at all levels of government do need to take this really seriously, and do need to take the crackdown seriously. And this Incline Village sort of Airbnb, you know, lack of action may just be a symptom of a greater issue that people aren't taking this seriously, and people aren't doing this on their own. So I am asking for some level of government interaction here, because maybe even a letter to the companies from Washoe County that indicates, "We're in a crisis right now, and we're in a situation where we do not need populations moving from place to place," and especially when we're seeing advertisements from these companies in the Bay Area with logos like, "Escape the lockdown, make it to the lake," "Get away from the virus, get away from it all," right? You know, they're straight-up advertising Tahoe as a way to escape the coronavirus from the Bay Area. So with that direct marketing of our area, I do feel like they're directly engaging us on that level of contagion and virus risk. So I, I'm just saying on this record and to you all that, please, take this coronavirus very seriously, and please, as elected leaders, do everything you can to, to up the bar of professionalism and in this area of seriousness when it comes to this, because we're in this for the long haul. And honestly, this Incline Village issue is one of many that will be cropping up, and we've been lucky so far. We've had really cold weather and a really hard time out there in our area, and I think that's been to our benefit, because it's kept people indoors. So it's just going to be a longer lockdown from here, and I think we're going to have to take it more and more seriously from here, and have better and clearer messaging from our leaders from here about staying inside and literally sheltering in place, or taking this as seriously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adler.
And Mr. Chair, we just now got the public comment from, in writing from Washoe 311. I don't know if you want me to also read that into the record, or just?
We'll just place it on the record now.
Thank you, sir.
I believe Mr. Adler, you know, made his comments very clear. All right. Do we have any further public comment at this time? Seeing none from our operators down on the, on the floor, we will bring it back to the board and close public comment at this time. Mr. Manager, we are on to item four.
Item four, Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Addendas.
All right, Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning?
I do not.
Okay. I will go to Commissioner Hartung first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think it's important to acknowledge this morning, they've been talking about the Atco trailers on the Edison site, and people probably don't realize the countless hours that you have put in to cut that deal. And I just wanted to personally thank you for the hard work that you've done to really make that happen. And so it's, it's not been broadcast, but believe me, I have noticed, I've talked to you, I know that all the hours you put in and all the, all the phone calls that you've made to really make that a reality. So I just, I wanted to thank you. And I also wanted to thank all the first responders. They've done a phenomenal job, fire, police, many others, in trying to respond to this pandemic in our community. I appreciate everyone staying home. I would ask, this is going to be kind of an odd ask, and I'm going to call some stores out, stores like Costco, stores like Walmart. Make your online presence more robust. I've tried to order things from Costco and Walmart, and from Costco specifically, they've told me that deliveries are not available at my zip code, which, which forces me to congregate at the store. And, and so, and I'm not talking about food goods, I'm just talking about, you know, just durable goods, the things that, that we need to get through this, or at least put me on a waiting list. It's, it's been a little disconcerting. That said, I want to thank our medical community for the response. They've, they've done an amazing job, and I've, I have some in my own family. I, I just appreciate the hard work, especially that the emergency room staff and all the, all the preparedness staff, all the work that they've done to really combat this. And so I just, I thank everyone. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk just briefly on our water supply, because I've gotten a lot of questions from folks. The water supply outlook for the region is still very good, and has improved over the past two weeks. Snowpack, as of March 27th, is 69% of normal in the Lake Tahoe Basin, and 67% of normal in the Truckee River Basin. This, of course, is a noticeable improvement from just two weeks ago, where we were at 42% of normal. Expect the April 1st snowpack numbers, when they come out next week, to be a little lower than, than the, the numbers that we're expecting here, the between 60 and 65%. Still much better than a few weeks ago. Normal Truckee River flows are projected to occur over the next two years because of the upstream reservoir storage. It's still in great shape, and we anticipated it'll be about 75% of maximum capacity. And, and at the end of June, we're anticipating, we're hoping about 85% of capacity. Lake Tahoe will only be down by about 1.6 feet from the, or is down currently about 1.6 feet from the rim. We expect it to rise about a half foot, which means in Tahoe, there's 744,600 acre-feet of storage. That means we'll only be down by 100 and about 22,000 acre-feet of storage, which is, which is really a good prospect. We're also anticipating that both Donner and Independence Lake will fill this year. So that's, and those are our direct beneficiaries for our region. With respect to the quality of drinking water, EPA's drinking water regulations require treatment at public water systems to remove or kill pathogens and virus, including COVID-19, which cannot survive in disinfected chlorinated drinking water. TUMWA utilizes conventional water treatment, including filtration and disinfection processes at our surface water treatment plants. Additionally, TUMWA can operate nearly 80 groundwater wells, which also utilize disinfection processes to provide safe drinking water to our customers. TUMWA staff continues to monitor and collect samples at all of our supply sources and the distribution system to ensure that water delivered to our customer meets all drinking water standards and requirements. TUMWA currently is operating at an internal pandemic response Level 3. The objectives of the response Level 3 are to contain the pandemic flu or other communicable diseases by ceasing all non-mission critical functions and processes, and/or by closing facilities or buildings at the direction of the general manager. And, and we've gone down to only mission-critical functions or processes. So then that, what that means is some of those directives are, access to the water treatment facilities has been completely restricted, and only those who work in support of the facility and the treatment and distribution of water and related systems are permitted to be on-site. We would also have people note that if you see TUMWA trucks parked at someone's residence, because they're all over the region, we have employees all over the region. Our water operations maintenance, the operations and maintenance employees have taken their trucks home and are being dispatched directly from, directly to job sites from home whenever possible, and they're using their laptops and, and working on their jobs at home. The majority of their work can also be done solo, so there's very little interaction with others. So TUMWA is really, we are taking this very seriously, and our water supply is in good shape and is safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung, we appreciate that update. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in next.
We have some great people in this county, that's for sure. They work very hard. Our manager's office has been, I mean, just rolling, 100% full charge, right? And I thank you guys for keeping it up. I don't know how you're doing it. And the other thing is, we've had a, some, in Lemon Valley, Swan Lake, some of the flood control equipment has been, you know, people have been taking it and selling it for scrap or whatever they're doing. And so I appreciated the add-on, the notice on the, on the radio this morning, telling people to watch out for, you know, for that sort of activity. So thank you very much for taking care of that on top of all the other things. I'm done with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung, I'm going to go to you next on the, on the phone.
Hello there, thank you. Yeah, I echo that, of course, to thank the regional subject matter experts for taking control of the information dispersal to the elected officials and to the public, and I really want to keep in mind how we can assist and help those people who are considered essential workers, but don't make the kind of money in the county that most essential workers do, these are the social workers, et cetera, and make sure that they are being helped and protected and stayed in their, in their housing. Thank goodness the governor put a stay on eviction, and just to do the best that we can for people that are food insecure but working full-time and providing for their own childcare. Those are the people I'm most concerned about now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Madam Vice Chair Burke Pickler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to take this opportunity to talk about the situation in Incline Village and Crystal Bay as it relates to COVID, and concerns that we are all getting many emails from many people concerned about vacation rentals. I would just say that there are a lot of seniors who live up there, there are a lot of seniors with underlying health problems who live up there, they are in a captive community. Just to quote from an article that was in the Reno paper regarding the virus landing in rural America, "The rural settings are all, are in general, where the problems are starting to come, are all affluent, mountain-ringed ski and hiking hamlets with populations under 55,000 that welcome millions of visitors each year, all have been grappling with a sudden surge in coronavirus cases, largely because people are not doing what they should and, and sheltering in place." The, one, the person that sent the email this morning saying that four teenagers had come in, I, part of the problem we're seeing with, in Incline Village, part of the problem we're seeing, is not necessarily that these are people renting vacation rentals, although there, there have been some of those from the online. It is people coming to their home, their second home, because as, as all of you probably are aware, a large percentage of the homes in Incline Village and Crystal Bay are in fact second homes. And so the residents live in California and, or maybe somewhere else, but largely in California. And they are not taking the advice of their own governor to shelter in place. Instead, they're picking up their toys, their ski toys, and bringing them to the mountain to play in the snow. Fortunately, IGID has issued a request from them for people not to come. Fortunately, they have closed all of their venues, so the ski resorts are closed. Of course, the golf courses still have snow on them, so there's not anybody playing golf there. They are now, have closed the major roads into the, to the parking lots or the beaches. Still, people are bringing their snowboards, or their backcountry skis, or whatever they're doing, and they're parking in, in and around people and going up into the mountain. Now, I will say that some of these are day trippers. So they are people who go in, they're coming up from, you know, one of the lower, like, one of the lower towns like Auburn, or maybe Truckee, or they're coming up from Reno, and they're going up and parking their cars up there, and, and then going and playing in the snow. So not all of this is STR or vacation rentals. For those of you who don't know what an STR is, not all of those are vacation rental problems. But there is a concern about vacation rentals. I took the time to speak with a number of our property managers up there, and I asked them to send me copies of their, of what they are doing, and they have all asked, all of their property, all the property managers that I spoke with have asked their, their owners and the property that they manage to not lease their properties out for the months of, the rest of the month of March and the month of April, and probably even into May. And so we, we are seeing a decrease in that. We are not seeing a decrease in the online AOL, I'm sorry, AOL, Vacation VRBO and all of those different places that are doing that. And they are, in fact, advertising in the San Francisco papers to go to the mountains. And even in one article, they said, "You can't stay anywhere in California, so go stay in Nevada. We have properties up there, we have cabins up there." Well, in our area, we don't have cabins, so we know they're not, those, those advertisements are not coming to us. I know Douglas County, I've been in touch with the county manager from Douglas County, he and I worked together on a number of Tahoe projects, and he, they have not ruled it out either for the exact same reason that Washoe County has not, and that is their district attorney says, "As long as the governor has it on the list as a necessary business, an essential business, that we do not have the authority, there's nothing statutorily that allows us to put a block on vacation rentals that are, that are coming from online." So, so really, I guess my plea here would be back to the governor to please take that off the essential property list, so that those of us who do have seniors who live in these areas and are concerned about their own health would be able to send a letter out saying, "Look, don't do this, you're going to get into trouble if you do this, whatever. We can't block off the roads. We can't, you know, tell the people they can't come to their own homes." But if we can get the online advertisers to stop advertising and stop renting in our, in our basin area, we would all be a lot better off. So I, you know, I, the other thing that happened, and I was really happy to see this, is that TRPA closed all of the boat ramps, and so there's no boat docking either. So you can't get your boat on, you can still get your jet ski on, because that doesn't necessarily go across a boat on, but the, all, all inspections are closed, all inspection stations are closed, and all boat docks are closed. So that certainly helps us deal with things. I get a lot of questions, as I'm sure the other commissioners do, on, "Do we have any cases in Incline Village right now?" We don't know the answer to that. That kind of information is part of the HIPAA requirements, and patients who have this, have a right not to have that information released, so we've not been releasing that information. Still, the issue continues to be a problem for the constituents in Incline Village. And I am concerned, gravely concerned, about how they are and what's going to happen up there. So I do know, I had the opportunity to talk with the, the chair about, and, and with the county manager about, what are we doing from perspective of going up to, taking things up to Incline Village? And I do know that there are going to be some testing stations, whatever we're calling them ultimately, that will go into Incline Village. And I do know that both our chair and our county manager are working aggressively on that for this community. I would also say, Commissioner Herman, for your benefit, that this exact same problem exists in Gerlach. Excuse me, if you go to Gerlach, you find more California cars than you do Nevada cars, because people are getting away, they're scared, and they're getting away. And this is a real serious problem for us here in Nevada. So again, I would simply say, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I think it's back in the hands of the governor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke Pickler. I want to start out first to acknowledge a few things. As you know, many of you are following along at homes, making sure that you are social distancing and self-quarantine, and truly taking this COVID-19 health crisis seriously. As we sit here today and to conduct, continue to conduct a public meeting for the benefit of the community, realize that all of your commissioners have been working daily on a number of issues. Our emails are never off, our phones are never off, we're continuing to do and conduct the business of the county. As you just heard, Commissioner Burke Pickler, and Commissioner Hartung, and Commissioner Jung, and Commissioner Herman, we are all continuing to do the jobs that are entrusted to us within our districts. So we want to let the public know that we are here working. But I also want to thank Manager Brown and all the staff here in all of their departments. It's, I think it bodes saying that Manager Brown, in the last three weeks, acted immediately when this became a crisis in a declaration of this county. He acted in the most professional manager to assure the safety of all of our employees, allowing them to distance themselves and work from home. I would like to applaud him and all the staff and the department heads that have allowed your staff to work from home. It has been tremendously helpful to try to, you know, sprit, to, what are we calling it, to dampen the curve, or, or lower, lower the curve.
Lower the curve, flatten the curve.
Flatten the curve. And as we continue to flatten the curve, it's important that we, we try to maintain this. But our work, the, the work has not changed, and our staff has been very amazing, and I want to thank them for their abilities to work from home and continue to act in a professional manner, and keep that going. I also want to thank all of our regional partners, the Health District that have worked tirelessly, their, their staff is on-call 24/7. Our Incident Command, as I pointed out, what that is represented through fire agencies and REMSIA and a number of different communities. Our hospital partners that are involved in this, all of the nonprofit community partners from the Food Bank, Catholic Charities, VOA, a number of industries that are working to continue to work for those individuals. The Sheriff's Office is, and all of our PD and first responders have been tremendously helpful in, in addressing a number of this. Dispatch, I can't thank enough. Our state and federal officers, I have been in straight, I've been in contact constantly with Governor Sisolak. He has called, almost called me on a daily basis. We contact in regards to how things are operating at the state and how we can work together cohesively. Our local county partners and sister counties that, across the state of Nevada, this truly is one of the most amazing responses that I've ever seen in, in an emergency in regards to how we come together as one Nevada, and I can't thank you enough in regards to that. Now to the severity of this, you know, as many of you follow along at covid19washoe.com, as we know, we've had now three deaths in Washoe County. Those three deaths have been reported to us as a consequence of COVID-19. Our heartfelt condolences goes out to their families and loved ones that are currently dealing with this issue. Many of you have challenges that we can't even begin to understand, and our heartfelt condolences are with you and your family at this time, and we can't even begin to share in your grief. There are currently 108 active cases within our community of individuals that are still dealing with this virus. We're very fortunate that 10 of those individuals that at one time have recovered from COVID-19. And our Joint Information Center, the JIC, that is with our Incident Command, has been on a phenomenal job to continue to disseminate that information out to the public and all of us on a timely manner, so that we keep up to date and can continue to combat this. As we, as we continue to move through a couple of things, I just want to bring up, Commissioner Hartung did point out, we are continuing to work on housing for those of those individuals within the community that may not have a place to go and isolate, either from their family or our indigent population. We are working tirelessly, our Incident Command, to get those units stood up and have multiple beds for those individuals to isolate safely over a period of time. We're continuing to work with the state government, Governor Sisolak yesterday stood up. The operations of the National Guard, now he did not stand up and activate the National Guard, but did have the operations of National Guard under General Berry to help with logistics of supply chains issues that we are experiencing here in northern Nevada and across the state. And so we are hoping to continue to work with Clark County, the state, and Washoe County as a whole, to continue to try to bring the supply chains back online and able to procure testing and available for everyone as soon as possible. And I know our Incident Command team is working on that. Another thing that has come out of this is the ability for our medical facilities to can keep up with the personal protection equipment. The PPEs, otherwise known as the people here in the, in the paper, those types of equipment is being procured on multiple different levels. We, we anticipate shipments of that PPE to be on-site here in Washoe County in the very near future for availability to all of our first responders and primary care individuals. So we are working very diligently on that. Another update from our federal partners are the SBA loans for our business communities. We are working with our business communities to identify how these SBA loans and what that will happen out of the CARES Act, the third package from the federal government, that is the $1 trillion stimulus package. Many of those dollars come back to local businesses to help us get out of this issue when that becomes a reality for us again in the near future. We want to make sure that we have a healthy community, but also a vibrant community that is socially and economically strong when we come out of this. So continue to follow along at covid19washoe.com for more up-to-date information, and we will, we will get that to you as we get that information. And like I said, any commissioners, all commissioners are working And like I said, any commissioners, all commissioners are working round the clock to answer all the questions of our district. Please feel free to reach out to all of us. We are available, and we will help you with any information we can. All right. With that being said, are there anything else that anybody would like to add? Seeing none, I will close that. We are on to item five. This is our consent agenda. Mr. Manager, are all the consent agenda items prepared and ready for approval? At your...
All right. Item 5A, recommendation to approve the reclassifications of vacant administrative secretary pay grade J to office assistant III, pay grade G, and a vacant office support specialist, pay grade H, to program assistant, pay grade K, county manager's office, as evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee, and authorize human resources to make the necessary changes. Mr. Chair, I would point out on this item that, given the COVID-19 financial impact on the county, we are delaying any future hires, including these positions. But we do ask for your actions so that as we come out of this, we're able to move efficiently in terms of the hiring process. But all of our departments are taking a hard look at open positions, and unless they're mission-critical, we're not filling them at this point, and to be cautious about our expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I want to point for all those joining in via teleconference or video conference. We are doing agendas a little different these days, obviously, that we are not usually, we do not usually read the consent agendas in, but because we are doing it this way, we've asked the manager to read all the items into the agenda so that we do have a public record for those listening in online. So with that being said, I appreciate that explanation. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda at this time?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Vice Chair Burke Bigler. Do we have any public comment, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk?
I have none.
All right. And I'm seeing none from the floor. All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung voting in the affirmative on the phone. We are on to item six. Mr. Manager.
Item six is a recommendation to receive and accept the declaration of a state of emergency declared by the Washto County Manager. Ratify the declaration and direct staff to publicize the declaration as required by WCC 65 dot 320.
All right. Are there any discussions on the declaration of emergency?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Burke Bigler, second from Commissioner Hartung. Do we have any public comment?
I do not.
Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by... Whoa, do we do? I'm sorry. I do have public comment.
I'm not seeing it yet.
Hold on, she's tapping it in.
Putting it in.
Gotcha.
All right. So I do have Ms. Judith Miller on the line. Ms. Judith Miller, we're going to release your microphone, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Ms. Miller, you have the floor.
First, I want to thank you all for addressing the needs here in Incline Village and other places around the county that are inundated by visitors from outside of the state. I just would like to hope that you will contact the governor and ask him to remove vacation rentals, unless they are being used for some noble purpose, like housing of emergency responders, to remove them from the list of essential businesses. And I don't want to keep you any longer. I hope that you are all staying well, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. We appreciate it. Seeing any further public comment? All right. Seeing no further public comment, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Commissioner Jung?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And we are on to item seven. Mr. Manager.
Item seven, recommendation to receive, accept, and ratify the interlocal agreement for Incident Command and coordinated response to COVID-19 entered into by the county manager on or around March 20, 2020, which delegates certain authority and responsibility for operational control and management only of the COVID-19 response from Washto County, the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the Washto County Health District to Incident Commander Sam Hicks. Describes and limits the duties and responsibilities of the Incident Commander and provides for the negotiation of a cost-sharing agreement between the parties.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any discussion on item seven from the commissioners in regards to the interlocal agreement for Incident Command?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Herman.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. Do I have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I have no emails.
I have seen no emails. Do I have any public comment from our live meetings? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board at this time. Looking, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung voting the affirmative via phone. All right. Item eight, Mr. Manager.
Item eight is a recommendation to accept a grant agreement between Washto County and William N. Pennington Foundation in the amount of $371,250 retroactively from January 17, 2020, in support of children in foster care for calendar year 2020. Ratify the authority of the Director of the Human Services Agency to execute the agreement and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments, Human Services Agency.
All right. Any discussion on this item for the grant agreement? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment?
Sorry?
I have no emails.
No emails. Do we have any from the floor? All right. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Vice Chair Burke Bigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You guys are too fast for me.
Sounds like I had five ayes. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Commissioner Jung voted in the affirmative via phone. All right. Item nine, Mr. Manager.
Item nine is a recommendation to accept a grant agreement between Washto County and the William N. Pennington Foundation in the amount of $198,600 retroactively from January 17, 2020, to support the installation of a playground on the Our Place campus. Ratify the authority of the Director of the Human Services Agency and purchase and contract manager to execute the agreement and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments, Human Services Agency.
All right. Do we have any discussion on this item? Commissioner Hartung.
Just, it's really no discussion. I just wanted to thank the William N. Pennington Foundation for all the great work that they do. You know, Mr. Pennington would be really, really proud of the work that that foundation does, and they're just such great community partners. I mean, it just never ceases to amaze me how often they step up, and so I just, I wanted to thank them publicly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Steve.
Oh. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I appreciate that. And we do want to thank the Pennington Foundation for all the work that they have done. And this Our Place project will be a tremendous asset to our community when that is available to stand up and treat those vulnerable, and help those vulnerable populations. So we can't thank you enough for that. All right. I do, at this time, looking for a motion to accept that.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Vice Chair Burke Bigler. Any public comment on the issue? No. We see no public comment. No public comment. All those, all right, we'll bring it back to the board. All those, a motion and a second, all those, please, my brain just shut down for a second. Looking for, yeah. All those, all those in the motion, can't even talk right now.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
You okay, sir?
Now I am, I guess. Motion carries unanimously with Mr. Commissioner Jung being on the phone, voting in the affirmative. Wow, thank you. That was a really bad mental break there for a second.
Are you okay?
I'm fine, I'm good. Thank you, sir. I just don't know, everything kind of got jumbled on me. All right. Mr. Manager, we're on to item 10.
Item 10 is a recommendation to award request for proposal, RFP number 3130-20, for facility operator of the Our Place Women and Family Shelter on the Our Place campus to Reno Initiative for Shelter and Equality Rise for the term of 14 months commencing May 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, with a provision of four one-year renewals in an amount of $1,983,333, plus up to $58,333 in possible reimbursements for hotels for the first 14 months, and an annual amount of $1,700,000, plus up to $50,000 in possible reimbursements for hotels. And if approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the agreement, Human Services Agency.
Okay, great. Madam Vice Chair, I have you send in.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had several people approach me with concerns about Rise. I know nothing about anything that's going on, and I almost routinely totally trust Amber and know what she's doing, as well as Kate, and they know what they're doing on this. But I do have one question that has been brought to me. Do we know how much experience Rise has in running a complete operation like this? And how many, what is the number of employees they have that they're going to be able to bring forth to run this project?
So Commissioner, I believe we have Amber available on the phone. Amber? Ms. Howell, are you available, Ms. Howell? She's, she, Ms. Howell, are you available to speak? Do you have a, are you having, she might have issues with her...
Mr. Chairman?
There you are.
No, this is Kitty Jung.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, while they're working on the technical connection, I can definitely tell you, I've worked with Rise as an organization for at least the last 12 years. It might even be longer when we first set up the very first community living center. And this is a homegrown, expert team that actually did, really was one of the very only organizations that stepped up to the challenge when we first opened the downtown shelter and were promised by all the activists in the community that they would run the shelter and found out nobody had the capacity. Rise is finally, at that point, grassroots, homegrown, from our state, from our, actually from here in Washto County, and are more than qualified to take on this function. And more so because of the RFP process, because it was competitive, they've demonstrated it, so it's not on faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. And I just did receive a message from Ms. Howell that she's having challenges to connect. What she did say is that, just basically affirming what Commissioner Jung did say, that through the RFP process, that this was a very clear and competitive process, Rise has been...
Chair?
We got her now?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schweitzer just raised her hand and asked you to...
Okay. Well, we'll go to Ms. Schweitzer.
This is Amber Howell, Chair. I used her laptop because that one works better.
Okay, great. All right, Ms. Howell, there you go. So you can say your own statements for you.
Yes. So to Commissioner Burke Bigler's question, a couple of things. Rise historically has worked as a volunteer agency. They have over 700 volunteers within their organization. They've been helping us for the last year, setting up the nutrition sites and working us on a variety of other policy committees. They will be hiring 38 positions for the Our Place campus as soon as this contract, if it gets approved, they are ready to begin the hiring process. All of their policies have been drafted and ready to go. They've been very responsive to all of our questions, they're very excited about this, and I've been pleased to see what their expertise has been bringing to this process.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear on the record. So thank you very much, Ms. Howell. As I suspected, you had done some extensive research on this, and I appreciate everything you do. So that's fine for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Hartung, I have you send in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And look, and I understand, I know people are probably looking at this expenditure right now. I know budgets are tight. We're all watching our fiscal health. We're all concerned with it. But this is such a vulnerable population that we'll be responding to. Now's not the time to pull back. I'm very supportive of this, and so I'm ready at any time anyone else is to make a motion and take a vote.
Okay. And, all right, so seeing no further comment, do we have any public comment on this item? Madam Clerk?
We just received three emails, which I can place on the record for you. Would you like to have them read in?
Could you please read them into the public record, please?
Actually, I'm sorry, these are all for...
Final public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm jumping again again.
Yeah, it's okay. We're, like I said, we had lots of, this is new for all of us. We're just kind of working through the kinks. Is there any public comment from the floor and on any of our live TV individuals? All right. Seeing no further, we'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion. I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Vice Chair Burke Bigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And with Commissioner Jung in the affirmation on the phone. All right. Yes. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
I just wanted to comment, thank you. I forgot to say thank you to Commissioner Jung also for chiming in. I should have done my due diligence and called you and asked you about it because I should have known you would know, but thank you very much.
All right. We are on to our final public comment. Mr. Manager.
Public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Right. All right. Do we have any public comment, Madam?
This time, we really do have some emails.
All right. So you've got three emails. Could you please read the names of those individuals and then read their comment on a three-minute period?
Certainly. The first email is from Diane Hirschberg. Dear Commissioners, I've heard that the district attorney has given you the opinion that you cannot close short-term rentals in Incline Village due to the fact that we are a Dylan's Rule state. We are desperate up here. Many of us are elderly, and we are in real danger of death from the virus if we catch it. We must go to the local grocery store to eat, even though we stay in at all other times. There's no delivery service here. The grocery store is filled with people who have arrived from California and other states because virtually all other mountain and vacation areas have closed, and they are staying in short-term rentals. We cannot leave here because of the stay-and-place orders. The people who are coming here are not just second homeowners. The bulk are transient vacationers in short-term rentals from online bookings. One, the Governor's Directive 003 and Division of Emergency Management Regulations of 320 2020 only apply to essential licensed businesses. Short-term rentals are no licensed businesses. The commissioners have said that STRs and residential neighbors are not businesses. The commissioners have not licensed the STRs. Therefore, the STRs are not within the definition of the type of activity that can remain open. Two, the directive and regulation require that the essential licensed business must adopt COVID risk mitigation measures that reduce the risks of community disease spread in order to stay open, and no STRs have done this. Three, the directive and regulation require the essential licensed businesses must comply with social distancing guidelines issued by the Centers for Disease and Prevention document entitled Implementation of Mitigation Strategies for Communities with Local COVID-19, transmission, and the Governor's Medical Advisory Team and Governor's directives. You do not have names of owners or rentals or cleaners, and no STRs complying with the directives, et cetera. Also, number three, the county is authorized at NRS 414.090 to, quote, "exercise the powers vested under this section in the light of the existences of the extreme emergency or disaster without regard to time-consuming procedures and formalities prescribed by..." disaster without regard to time-consuming procedures and formalities prescribed by law. This is the most extreme emergency you will likely ever see. Please do something to save us, as time is very short." NRS 414.90 gives authority to local governments, quote, "to enter into contracts and incur obligations necessary to combat such an emergency or disaster, protect the health and safety of persons and property," end quote. Please incur the obligations necessary to combat this emergency in Incline Village, Crystal Bay, and frankly, Washoe County, as that is where the sick people will go for treatment, and adopt emergency regulations to close short-term rentals as requested in numerous emails to the commissioners from local residents. Diane Hirschberg, full-time Incline Village resident. Okay, Arden.
You got one, you got two more?
I have two more. The next one is from Carol Black, an Incline Village resident. She has sent us an email captioned, "Please intervene to address COVID-19 exposure rate tourism in Washoe County Tahoe area," and this is said to be a copy of a message sent to the Nevada governor. "Given recent rapid escalation in COVID-19 cases, I am writing to update my message from late last week. The Washoe County Commissioners are meeting Tuesday morning to consider actions. I understand they await your written approval to implement steps such as those listed below within Washoe County. To hopefully mitigate adverse outcomes, the following restrictions and interventions should be implemented immediately for the Tahoe area. One, mandatory 14-day quarantine of all visitors entering the area. In addition, consider focused entry restrictions for tourists/visitors, see below. Number two, checkpoints at vehicle entry points for screening along with screening of airport and train arrivals for symptoms and exposures with triage to appropriate interventions. Three, temporary closures of STRs and other tourists facing transient lodging with limited specific exceptions, e.g. for temp healthcare or emergency service workers. Four, broad publicity campaign expansion of the Stay Home for Nevada theme, saying, 'Please stay home, we will welcome you back when it's safe,' coupled with additional closures as indicated such as Nevada State/County parks. California has closed state parks, see below. Rationale, as you know, currently, a priority issue of concern is COVID, is exposure from elsewhere being brought into the Tahoe area, where healthcare surge capacity, capability, and supplies are limited. In addition to closing STRs and other tourist transient lodging, complementary travel restrictions are proposed. Enforcement would still be a challenge, but at least there would be no restrictions, there would be restrictions with penalties that can be publicized. As applicable, similar interventions could also be considered statewide, or at least for similarly impacted areas of the county and/or state. Though the CDC website, as of this AM, mentions only limited specific travel restrictions within the U.S., CDC also speaks about avoiding spreading disease to others. If you do decide to travel, be sure to take steps to help prevent getting and spreading COVID-19 and other respiratory diseases during travel. Further, note that the CDC has listed the U.S. at Level 3 risk, which is defined as avoid nonessential travel due to widespread ongoing transmission of COVID-19. Thus, these proposed regulations, restrictions should be consistent." And she gives a website to Forbes.com, dated 3/27/20, at CDC, U.S. has jumped to a Level 3 travel health notice. Tourist areas with characteristics similar to WC Tahoe area, and, thank you, sir.
And the remainder will be put on the record.
Thank you, and I've got one more.
Thank you.
This email is from Pamela Tsiigdinos, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce her name. It says, "Dear Commissioners, I am Pamela Tsiigdinos, a resident of Incline Village. I am lodged into, logged into the March 31 Commissioner Meeting via Zoom. I would like to offer the following public comment regarding short-term rentals, STRs. Thank you for your work. In this COVID-19 pandemic, we need the help and support of Washoe County Commissioners and other Washoe County leadership to elevate to our governor the need to ban short-term rentals, STRs, in Washoe County, to anyone other than a first responder. As you know, online booking companies such as Airbnb, VRBO, and many others are advertising the Incline Village and other mountain lake communities in Washoe County as vacation destinations. This presents a significant hazard to our community of full-time residents. With only a four-bed critical care hospital, Incline Village is at risk from those who see our community as an escape from pandemic hotspots, such as the San Francisco Bay area. I would like you, I would write to you as a chronic asthma patient and represent many others with underlying chronic health conditions. I ask that you reach out to Governor Sisalak to amend emergency regulation, NAC 414, which identified short-term rentals, STRs, as essential businesses. These short-term rentals present a public health and safety hazard to Nevada residents during this COVID-19 pandemic. Our existing community and our healthcare first responder support services and facilities are vulnerable. Please protect us from property management companies that seek to profit at the expense of our public health and safety. South Lake Tahoe in California has already taken action. We need your help." And that concludes the emails that I believe I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we'll go to our individuals from the live TV, from our Zoom meeting. First, I have on the list Mr. Will Adler. We'll unblock your mic. Mr. Adler, you have three minutes, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to briefly comment that, you know, it is a tough time right now, I do get that, but you cannot say a statewide edict is not precise enough for accounting, in my opinion. You know, at a statewide level, you got to set the floor, not the ceiling, right? People can enact restrictions greater than that restriction anytime, it's just they cannot, you know, not do with that restriction, that statewide order as declared as I read it. So I do find it as a little interesting that the comments are that the governor needs to take a very micro approach to this and micro-target close short-term rentals, when, as we all know in the county code, short-term rentals include all hotels and other housing, which would cause a disaster if you actually closed all short-term rentals. So, do you know that it is up to everyone to micro their own decisions on this one, but I appreciate the moment to comment, and thank you for taking my comments into the record.
And, Mr. Chair, before I let Mr. Adler go, it looks like I had a late public comment come in via Commissioner Jung, and, Mr. Adler, it looks like it was something you already sent to me earlier, is that correct?
I have submitted, this is Will Adler for the record, Silver State Government Relations. I submitted last night a letter to the Washoe 311, the link included in the agenda for this meeting, yep.
And was it captioned, "SSGR public comment for Washoe County"?
Yeah, that would be it.
Thank you.
Yep, that is, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Any further public comment from any of our Zoom meeting members? All right, seeing no further public comment from our Zoom meeting members, we will bring public comment back to the board and close that. We are on to our final agenda item today, which is item 12. Commissioners and county managers now, Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add this afternoon?
I just, Mr. Chair, would like to take the opportunity to thank the employees of Washoe County who have really stepped up to the plate in terms of their flexibility, and they're willing to kind of help get through this, these trying times. It might be of interest for folks to know that we have many employees who are working from home, you mentioned that earlier, it's, it's right now, somewhere about a third of our workforce, we believe, is working from home, so they are conducting business where appropriate, by email, by phone, or through our website with various stakeholders. But in addition to that, we have people whose positions don't really lend themselves to working from home, and I think it's important to point out, these are employees who are reaching out to me, and asking what can they do to help the county, to help our constituents, to help the residents and businesses of Washoe County. Just don't find that in a lot of places, I'm very appreciative, and I'd just like to give a shout out, and then, if I may, I'd like to thank Mr. Burr and Ms. Jordan for helping us with our special arrangements today. I hope this is the first step in a journey towards more virtualization, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I appreciate that. So we'll start with Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just very briefly, I would like to ask the district attorney to please provide this commission a written reason as to why we, it is the belief of our district attorney's office that we cannot issue an order closing STRs. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the manager, his team of nearly, what, about 3,000 FTEs for pretty much seamlessly taking care of the business here in Washoe County, and I think now more than ever, we realize how very important our public servants are, whether virtually or in person. And my final thought would be, take care of each other. I think that's the thing we need to learn all the way around, let's start taking care of each other. So I'm here if anybody needs me, that includes the elected department heads and my colleagues at the commission, and of course, any, any, any and all citizens that need help. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for being our face, our voice, and frankly, taking this much more seriously than anybody else did in the entire Western region, so thank you, you deserve all the credit, and thank you for deploying the resources and being there for us, and take care of yourself as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, we appreciate it, thank you for joining us via the phone today. All right, Commissioner Herman, I have you sign in next.
I just wanted to wish you all that you all stay safe and well. You're in my prayers, God bless you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, sort of a final closing thanks and statement, you know, we're in uncharted territory. My heart and prayers go out to the folks that passed, their families, their friends, their neighbors, fellow citizens, stay safe, and that means social distancing, but I'd also like you to realize how hard everyone is working, the health district, sheriff, police, fire, emergency medical staff, but also, think about the people in the grocery stores who are working right now, so that we can go in and purchase much-needed supplies. The clerks, the truck drivers, UPS, FedEx, postal workers, of course, all the elected officials in the region and on the national level, the folks who work in the food bank, Meals on Wheels, staff working in elder care facilities, if you know a senior, please reach out to them and do a wellness check, I mean, it's really, really important. When we were doing deliveries yesterday, I mean, these folks have sequestered themselves, and they just, they have very little outside contact, and so there's, I mean, there's some real need out there, and not just with seniors, I mean, there are, you know, families and et cetera, so just, as Commissioner Jung mentioned, just do a wellness check on people that you know, just make sure that everything is okay. I also want to thank, because I know that they're, I mean, they are scrambling, the teachers in our region to do their lesson plans and come up with a new methodology to keep kids on track. I know I'm missing a whole bunch of people, our staff at Washoe County, all the hard work that's been done, the manager's office, I mean, everybody's just done a phenomenal job, and so I, I'm thankful, I cannot begin to express my debt of gratitude to everyone, and I just really appreciate everyone hunkering down right now, we will get through this, stay strong, Nevada, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. My final comments today is that realizing everybody out there that we are fighting currently a faceless, invisible enemy that we know nothing about, we're learning every day, a little bit here and there, but this is a fight that we've never experienced for horror in our lives. This is a virus that is indiscriminate, when they pick their, when it picks its patient or prey to prey upon. We're seeing, it doesn't matter whether you're young or old, whether you're a man or woman, it doesn't matter. This is very serious, people are dying out there, and this is not a time to take this lightly. We urge you on behalf of all of Washoe County to please stay home for Nevada, please stay home, keep yourself safe, keep yourself, if you have to go out, make sure that you adhere to social distancing, make sure you adhere to the hygiene requirements, make sure you wear gloves, use hand sanitizer, wash your hands. But as Commissioner Hartung pointed out, and every commissioner here, be gracious to one another, be nice to one another, this is the time that we need to pull together as Nevadans and truly show that we are pioneers of this state, we have been here, we have gone through rough times before, we will get through this as well, but it's when we pull together as a community and as a state that makes the difference. So with that, we want to thank everybody for joining us today, we appreciate you signing in, please be safe, be healthy, check into covid19.washoe.com for all the up-to-date information, and we will see you all soon. We are adjourned, thank you very much.